Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
President.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Here.
Councilmember Siddiqui.
Here.
And Councilmember Stallings. Madam Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Now we will do the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'll take approval of the agenda. Before we do that, is there a motion to excuse Councilwoman Stallings?
I'll make a motion to excuse Councilwoman Stallings.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's moved and second. We still have to do a roll call on that one, too?
I believe so. We should. We should. And this is to excuse Councilmember Stallings.
Yes, ma'am.
And roll call will be Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Siddiqui.
Yes.
And Councilmember Ferguson.
No.
Motion carried to excuse Councilmember Stallings from this meeting.
Thank you. Now go to the approval of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
So moved in second. Is there any discussion of it? Corrections? Anything? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Siddiqui.
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
And Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Motion carried to approve the agenda for July 27, 2020.
Thank you. Next, we'll move to the consent agenda. And these are all of the items that are considered to be routine and not controversial by the city council and will be approved by one motion. In the consent agenda, it will be the approval of minutes from June 15, 2020 study session, approval of minutes from June 15, 2020 council meeting, approval of minutes June 22, 2020 special council meeting, approval of minutes July 13, 2020 study session. Do I have a motion, please? Can I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Moved in second. Can I have a roll call, please?
Roll call. Councilmember Siddiqui.
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Motion carried to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Next, we're gonna have the consideration of approval of the monthly dispersment reports for the month of June 2020 and year-end investment reports.
I'll make a motion to approve the dispersment reports for $862,559.40, made up of several funds. The general fund expenditure was about $370,000, major roads were about $15,000, local roads for $133,000, capital fund for $3,200, downtown development authority for $12,500, and the water and sewer department for $327,000.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? And I actually, I do. There was something, I knew I should have wrote it down and I didn't. But it is on... First question is, we're still taking deposits for the community room right now?
I'm not certain what you're looking at. There may be, actually be refunds of deposits. We're not having any rentals through the end of August at the present time.
Okay, I'm trying to find it because I know I was looking at this and I don't see it now.
Kelly, I think it's on page 22.
Yeah, it's at the, oh, yeah, at the top. So there's, what, seven of them?
Yeah, those are the ones we were refunding back for parties that were later this year or since August or until August.
It just doesn't say refund on it. That's why I'm, it's, I got a little confusion. At the one at the bottom, it says a gym membership refund, so I'm assuming there's not enough room on the line to say, okay, thank you with that one. And then it was something else that was on there. For Cliff, it was a community room event, so there was something there that he, I mean, there was something going on for the community room in June?
It wasn't an event. It was part of the sanitation process and modifications that we could be making to that space.
Gotcha. So here's my last question. Is there a way, and I've seen it in some of these, and I might be totally off with this, but is there a way maybe to have something on the lines that can like maybe say COVID or something to that extent? You know what I mean? So later on, when we have to do the gathering of, or when you all have to do the gathering of what was spent, that we could find it easier? You get what I mean?
Actually, Pam, I don't know if you want to respond, but we actually put that in place where the coding has the extension .001 under government operations. We just started it, so it's not reflected in this report. But going forward, so that those will be coded in such a way that we can easily identify them as COVID-related expenses. Pam, do you want to add anything to that?
No.
That's also be broken out in the report. Will it be broken out in the report in that way?
It'll be broken out under the individual line item.
But that's really, we wouldn't...
There's the account number, actually.
We want to know what it is. You, I'm just making sure that you all know what it is when you pull it out. So when this all works out, we'll have it at our fingertips. That's all.
I have several as well. Page 39, fourth line down for the library. I'm just curious why the expenditure is only half of, you know, we typically, we budgeted $120K. And for the end of the fiscal year, we were only at $60,000.
Because it's two payments. One they get in December, one they get in June.
Right, but shouldn't that be at $120,000? Because the June was the end, June 30th was the end of our fiscal year. So they should have had two payments by that point, right?
This was a payment that was in July because we didn't get their billing till July, so we had to back it to June.
Okay. And then on page 42, up at the top, the state shared revenue is much lower. I'm assuming, is some of that due to the fact, if I remember, if I understood what I read from the governor's office recently, they, they're delaying payment for, what, July and then increasing the payment in August or something like that?
We get another payment. We got our payment in June, the end of June. And then if you're talking about state shared revenue, we don't get another payment till the end of August.
Okay. And then on page 46, third line down.
You said 46?
46, yeah. Under the Water Department, under penalties. You know, we had $25,000. We expect $25,000 in penalties. But for some reason, the penalties were showing a negative amount for penalties? Are we giving money back to somebody for something or?
Where's the negative? I don't see a negative.
Well, the year-to-date balance is a negative $11,831.
On page 46?
Page 46, third line down.
Yep.
Oh.
I would think that the penalties would always be positive unless somebody made a major, had a major penalty and we had to reimburse that money for some reason.
I'll have to look into that. I'm not sure why it's a negative, but we're still looking into things for the audit, so. That's one thing to look into.
All right, just let us know. And that's all I had on that.
Does anyone have anything else? Or any additional discussions? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
I have a motion. I didn't get a second.
Sorry.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call. Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
And Councilmember Siddiqui.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next, we'll have the consideration of accepting the department reports. Can I have a motion, please?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept the department reports.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Siddiqui.
Yes.
And Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. We don't have any presentations. This is the opportunity for public comment for items that's gonna, that is on the agenda. Speakers, excuse me, I'm tongue tied. Speakers are limited to three minutes. Do we have anybody that would like to speak?
No hands raised.
Pardon me?
No hands raised.
Okay, thank you. We don't have any, we don't have any public hearings, so we'll go right to our action requests.
I'm sorry, Mayor Garrett.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry for the interruption, but I do have a communication from one of our residents. Her name is Joanne Ball. And she wanted, yeah, she wanted me to let city council know, residents know that she is opposed to the, uh, to marijuana facilities being in the city. She called the other day and she doesn't have access to computers and everything. So she wanted it to be noted that she is opposed.
Okay, thank you.
Her name is Joanne Ball at 28666 Blackstone here in the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other, I don't have any communications. Anyone else have any communications?
I have the one from Michael Griffin, but I was gonna introduce that one during the, I think it's more appropriate during the infrastructure discussion.
Okay. So next, the action requests for consideration and approval is the second reading and adoption ordinance to amend Chapter 14, Building and Building Regulations. Amending Article was at eight, swimming pools. Division one, generally, section 14-184, placement and elevation. So it's about the swimming pool. Who would like to introduce it? Which I'm gonna assume that would be our city attorney.
Yeah, I can talk about this one. So this was brought up, and first reading was last month, June 15, for council was brought up based on a couple inquiries as to whether or not the city still allowed or prohibited above-ground swimming pools. So when we looked into it, there was some confusing language in the ordinance, to put it nicely. So what this ordinance does is it removes that confusion. And so this will effectively allow for above-ground pools. And I know that the building official has received several applications for people that would like to install above-ground pools. And so they, once this, after this final reading, they will be, he will be able to accept, formally accept those and process those applications.
Okay, thank you. Who would like to make the motion? The motion's at the bottom of page 69.
I can make it. I'll make a motion to approve the second reading and adoption of an ordinance to amend Chapter 14, Building and Building Recommendations. Article seven, swimming pools, Division one, section 14-184 on the placement and elevation of swimming pools.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Siddiqui.
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
And Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next up is going to be the fireworks ordinance. Okay.
I can introduce this one as well. So this was, again, based on some requests to update our ordinance. Our current ordinance that's in place does limit the ignition of firework devices. Lost the word there. Does prohibit the ignition of firework devices on specific dates. Actually, it prohibits on more dates than under the state law. But with the update to the state law, the city was prohibited from enforcing its ordinance on the days that were identified under the state law. So if someone were operating or shooting off fireworks later than what was allowed under state law, even though it was in conflict or violation of our ordinance, because of that conflict, we weren't able to write tickets for that. So at council's request, what I have done is I've prepared an ordinance that adopts the state law and mirrors the state law so that we can, for our police department, can enforce those ordinances consistent with state law.
Thank you. May I have a motion, please? Anybody want to do a motion?
I'll make a motion to amend Chapter 46 miscellaneous offenses, provisions, forfeitures, and penalties, amending Article three, offenses against the person, section 46-81, use and sale of fireworks, and 46-82, permit for use and sale of fireworks.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Councilmember Siddiqui.
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next up will be the road improvement bond millage. I will turn that over to Mayor Pro Tim to introduce.
Okay, I will try to be quick to introduce a lot of information. As everyone knows, in 2019, in November, we had a road proposal on the ballot that was defeated. And the residents, you know, were pretty clear that they felt that that proposal was a little bit too aggressive and too costly. And so the infrastructure committee took, you know, our lessons from that, from that election, looked at all the feedback, and spent a lot of time talking about the feedback. And then held probably close to a dozen meetings since the election. Most of them were very well attended. We had a lot of resident input. The residents helped shape the proposal that I'm about to describe, so it was very good to have that kind of input. And then once, once we did have some plans developed, we did hold three town halls where we received some further input to help the committee try to hone down the three different proposal options into the one that was ultimately being recommended. So what I'd like to do is give a summary of the road and ditch proposal. And the idea here is to introduce this. Council all has in their packet a variety of detailed information, which I'm sure you've all read, and you've also been introduced to it a couple weeks ago in terms of the detailed recommendation, costs, bond issues, and so forth. And so the idea here is to eventually decide whether or not we want to recommend tonight that this recommendation be accepted and put on the November 3, November 3, yeah, November 3 ballot for the residents to decide whether or not they are in agreement with this proposal to fix our roads and ditches. And so the proposal itself, in terms of the roads, we've scaled it way back from doing all the roads that we were going to do last November to just doing slightly more than seven miles, about 7.1 miles of road, which is about 20% of, 27% of our local roadway. The project would take three years and would start in the spring of 2021. And it would cost about $5.8 million, which is, again, substantially less than the $21 million we were asking for last November. And that $5.8 million would be paid back by the residents and the businesses in the city over 10 years. So it would be a 10-year, 10-year millage. The millage rate would work out to about 3.9 mils. And to the average homeowner with a taxable value of around $67,000 in later village, that would work out to about $262 per year, again, for 10 years. So again, everything was substantially scaled back and reduced relative to what we proposed in last November. And the 7.1 miles and the resulting $5.8 million, the way that we came up with that was looking at the different categories of roads, of asphalt roads that needed to be repaired in the city. And we have about 3.9 miles of asphalt road in the city that require full reconstruction. And so that's where you take off the five inches of asphalt and you dig down the 14 inches of substrate that's underneath that, get rid of it, and replace the whole thing. So we have, again, 3.9 miles in that category. And so what we decided was that we were gonna try to do about 60%, two-thirds of that roadway. And so we're gonna, we're gonna do about 2.6 of those miles. In addition, we also have one mile of roadway that requires reconstruction, but not full reconstruction. So in other words, we have to take the five inches of asphalt off, leaving the, but are able to leave the 14 inches of substrate below it. And so we've got one mile in that category, and we decided to do about 60% of that, or about 0.6 miles within that category. And then in the rehab category, that's where we can take, just skim off the top three inches of asphalt and put new asphalt down. We have 4.4 miles in that category. And so again, we strove to do about 70, 75% of that roadway. And so that worked out to be about 3.7 miles. And then lastly, if you remember in the November proposal of last year, we had proposed paving all of the dirt roads. And what we did is we scaled that way back based upon community input. And we scaled that back down to about 0.2 miles of the 1.7 miles. And while we haven't decided on a road, you know, we're talking mainly about potentially doing one of the major thoroughfares. We've got a few of those, and those that are in ingress into the, into the city. So very, very small amount there. And when you add all of those categories up together and the estimates associated with those categories, it comes out to be about $5.8 million and about 7.1 miles. And so we will, and I should say, there may be some slight adjustments in those categories in terms of the mileage that we do once we get into picking the specific roads. But we do have, and have created in the finger packet, a list, a map showing the eligible roads. So of those 4.9, 5, 6, of those roughly, I'm guessing, I'm just adding it up here while I'm talking, 11 or 12 miles of eligible road. We've mapped that out so residents can see, you know, which roads are eligible to be repaired. Again, we're only doing a portion of each of those categories and not all of, all of them. We're basically, we've tried to keep it down below four mils, which we were successfully able to do. The other thing I want to point out is this is only addressing asphalt roads. We're not dealing with the concrete roads at this time. The concrete roads are much more expensive. And we wanted to try to get, the committee wanted to try to get as much road work done as possible. So once we do this project, you know, if this goes successfully and is well received by the residents, we can come back and try to do a second project to address roads that were left behind in this particular go-around. So that's, that's the road piece. And for council's benefit, let me stop there and see if there are any questions about the roads before I begin to explain the ditches, which is a little bit more complicated.
Is there any questions?
Okay. All right, so then with respect to the ditches, you know, we took a lot of input at our meetings from residents. And based on that input, as well as the, you know, kind of the positions of the people on the committee, we kind of felt that there were two major tenants that we really needed to, you know, address with the ditches. And one was that we needed to maximize the investment that we make in our roads. And so one of the issues that we have with our ditch system is if you put a brand-new road next to a non-functioning ditch, you're not going to get the full life out of that road. So if we put, if we put, say, a million dollars into replacing some roads that are next to poorly operating ditches, we're gonna lose about 10% of the life of that road, or that roadway that we put in, which basically equates to us throwing $100,000 of taxpayer money down the drain. So, oh, actually, that was a good unintended pun. But so one of our major tenants was to make sure that the ditches that are associated with the 7.1 miles of road, you know, get done and addressed so that we are maximizing the investment and using city tax dollars as wisely as possible. That was one tenant. The second tenant was that we, we tried to as much as possible leverage the, you know, the massive amount of savings that are involved. Together at the same time. So the example I've thrown out, you know, all throughout last year is, you know, the most expensive part about the ditching program is, you know, when you have to replace driveway culverts. And to do that, you have to crack half of the driveway approach and then repave it after you put the new culvert in. Well, a lot of those driveway approaches are gonna get cracked and repaved anyways with the road, with the road projects. So rather than doing that twice, you can do it once and save residents a lot of money since it would be paid for under the road piece in most cases. Same thing with landscaping and other areas as well. So the proposal, then, keeping those two tenants in mind, is what we're recommending is that, at least in this go-around, only the roads that those 7.1 miles that we're talking about will be required to have, you know, their ditches done. So basically, if your road gets done, your ditch also gets done. And in terms of paying for those, that ditch work, that will be done via special assessment that can be paid back by the residents over 10 years. And what we'll do is we'll do the special assessment on street segments where the, you know, the ditch is working as a holistic system. And the costs for repairing that segment, the specific costs for repairing that segment will be split evenly among the residents who are on that, that street segment. So this is very much in line with what people were asking for in their feedback in the defeat of the last proposal. You know, people were saying things like they didn't want to pay for, you know, my ditches work fine. Why should I have to pay for somebody else's ditches, you know, a mile away that aren't working appropriately? So this kind of addresses that. People will pay the same amount, and they'll pay, it'll be split evenly among the homes on those, on those street segments. So as we got into it, there are, there can be some issues here with that in the fact that when you get down to the granular, granular level, what we do see is in some cases, you'll have street segments that have no houses on them or very few houses, you know, one, two, maybe three houses. And then you start getting into, you know, estimated costs that get into the $1,400, $1,500, $1,600, you know, per year for 10 years, which is obviously quite cost prohibitive. And so as part of the recommendation, what we're, what we're looking to do is, well, let me step back. In some situations, we'll be able to do some creative special assessment district creation to address some of those homes. So for example, you know, if you've got two homes that are adjacent to a street, and those two homes are the only homes in that small little section, but it's adjacent to another street that's getting done as well, and those, and that system works together, then it logically makes sense to combine those, those homes with the, with the street into one special assessment district. So some of the instances where this occurs will be reduced through creative, through the creation of the special assessment districts themselves. But what we also recommend is in instances where that can't be done, that should the cost per year approach around $400, that those people are not required on that street to get their... to get their ditch repaired. And so what that really represents is about 17% of the eligible homes for roadwork will fall into this category. And it should be less than that 17% because, again, we should be able to take some of those houses and creatively include them in other special assessment districts. So we're recommending that not to go over that threshold. For the other 83% of homeowners, the ditch cost for them will average around $223 per year, again, for 10 years over the special assessment. And that estimate is based solely on the length of the, of the street segment as well as the number of homes in that segment. So if you have two street segments that are the same distance and one's got a lot of homes, they're going to pay a lot less than, you know, another street that only has a few homes. But in actuality, the actual cost is going to, you know, be based, you know, on the actual condition of the ditch on any given, given segment. So for example, you know, I would use my street as an example. Across the street from me, you know, the ditch system works great, but across the street from me, at the end of the flow, there's a big root blocking the, you know, the flow, and it backs up on the whole street. So that's probably going to be a very low-cost repair versus other streets where, you know, you may have three or four culverts that have heaved, you know, and culverts need to be replaced. So it's going to depend on the condition of the individual ditches on those streets as well. And then additionally, as part of the recommendation, you know, the committee understands that with the special assessment process, residents do have the ability to block the, any proposed special assessment. And so in cases where residents get together and decide that they don't want to do the ditches, then we're recommending that those roads then be skipped and that the city move on and pave a different road instead of that road. Because, again, we would be wasting tax dollars, significant amounts of tax dollars, to put a road on a, to replace a road where the ditch systems aren't up and running to spec. You know, we would lose dollars there. Alternatively, what we're also recommending is that any street segment who wants to be proactive, and because the special assessment process is long and arduous, if they want to help the city out by putting together a petition and turning it into the clerk to say that, you know, their segment is willing to do the special, to undergo a special assessment to have their ditches done, they will be bumped up on the priority list in terms of doing roads. Because remember, in each category, we're not doing all roads. We're only going to be doing about 60% of the roads. So by putting together a petition saying that they're willing to cover the cost of the special assessment, we'll move them up in priority, kind of give them a bump up. The other thing just to mention about the ditches too is streets that aren't part of the 7.1 miles that get done, they do have the option to, you know, ask for a special assessment. And we do have some streets that have been looking into that. And it would be advantageous to them to do it within those three years because all of the equipment and staff and materials are mobilized already to our city. So the cost of doing their ditch repair would be much less if they waited to the fourth year and said, hey, we want to have our ditches done. So that would be something that residents could ask for as well. Lastly, the committee, the infrastructure committee will, each year will make a recommendation of what roads, what specific roads off of the eligible list will get paved, as well as create the specialist, you know, recommend the special assessment districts. They'll approve that, and then they'll pass it on to council to approve. So it'll kind of be a two-step approval. So there'll be two sets of eyes on what roads and what ditches, you know, actually get improved. So make sure that the process is fair and that everything has been considered. So just to kind of summarize, everyone in the city, both residents and businesses, will pay the millage for the roads. But only those people who live on roads that are being improved will pay for the ditch improvements, and that will be via a special assessment that is split evenly over 10 years by the members of their, or the homeowners on their block. So a little bit more, a little bit more complex. Unfortunately, there really isn't a one-size-fits-all solution when it comes to the, comes to the ditches. But so that's the recommendation. The committee voted on that four to one. There was one, one member who abstained, who was not in favor of a 10-year proposal. And in a minute, I can read his statement. But let me open it up for questions on the ditches from council.
So regarding the ditch, two things. Where you said, one, that residents can opt out of it. Is it, and if you said this, I'm sorry, was there a percentage of residents or, you know?
Yeah. So with any, with any special assessment, all it takes is, you know, basically 51% to stop a, stop a special assessment. And so, you know, our recommendation is that if, you know, let's say we're going to do Sunnybrook, which is where I live, and, you know, there's 14 houses on here, and eight of them get together and say, we don't want our ditches done, we just want the road done. Well, then, then we're recommending that that road is not paved because we will be wasting tax dollar money by paving that road.
Okay. And then the second question, like, where I live, on a corner house, where I know that Santa Barbara is a bad street, but the street that I actually live on is not as bad, but I have ditches on both streets. You get where I'm going with this? So how am I, how is someone like me, not me per se?
My understanding of the way the special assessment process is going to work, or would work is, and Scott, correct me if I'm wrong, it's going to be based on, and this is the, you know, based on the way I did the estimates anyways, it's based on the street that you live on. So if your address is a lacrosse address, then you would be paying for the lacrosse, sorry. I'm speaking in code.
Sorry, no worries.
Using code words. But yeah, so it would be, you'd be paying based on the footage on lacrosse. And that's kind of where we get into the issue to some extent where, you know, in the example that you gave, the other street, you know, would have, would basically have linear footage without a home. Right? And so that's where we got into the issue where we had, you know, a lot of, I shouldn't say a lot, but we had, you know, at least a significant amount, you know, 17%, where, you know, you had one, two, three, you know, even sometimes four homes. But, you know, the cost came out to be 800, 1,000, in some cases, I think it was $1,600. And we just, you know, it's unfair to ask, you know, a resident to pay $1,600 a year, you know, to fix their ditches. And so, you know, we want to maximize the amount of ditching that we can do, and I think we could probably get it, you know, we're, like I said, it's about 83% where, you know, we're under that threshold that we talked about. And that 83% averages to about $223 per year. But we think we can probably get it up to, you know, maybe 85, 87, maybe even higher percent, you know, with some creativity in the creation of the special assessment districts. And we want to create as fewer, as few special assessment districts as possible anyways because this is going to be a lot of work for Cheryl and Scott and, you know, their team, Pam. And, you know, so obviously, we want to try to create as few of those districts as possible.
Okay. Does anyone else have any?
I was just going to say, and that was why we thought it was kind of cool to put the carrot out there, you know, for the, you know, for the, for a street to get together and say, hey, we want our ditches done. We're willing to do this because the last thing we want to do is, you know, pick the streets, go through the special assessment process, you know, and so now we're getting closer and closer to spring. And, you know, a street comes back and says, nope, we're not doing the special assessment process. And now we got to scramble to pick another street and, you know, go through the special assessment process, which requires, I think, a couple of public hearings. And so we want to avoid that. So if we can, you know, get those streets to, you know, who, you know, are gung-ho to do this and say, hey, we're willing to do this, then we'll bump them up on the priority list because it'll save us a lot of time and money and effort, you know, to know who those streets are.
Gotcha. Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions or comments?
All right. Let me, let me read, let me read Michael's comment. So first off, I do want to thank the committee members because the committee members worked hard on this, you know, Joe Robinson, who I think is on the call, Michael Griffin, Mike Keenan, whom I think is at least listening in, and Hugo Cardenas. And then also on the call tonight, Cheryl Mitchell, Saleem Siddiqui, and Scott Ringler were also advisors to the committee who also helped out. But I do want to, as I said, it was, it was a four to one vote, and I have it here somewhere yet. So I wanted to read, Michael, Michael Griffin couldn't be with us tonight. He was, he was very instrumental in helping shape the proposal, but he was not in favor of it because of the length of the payback period. So I just want to, want to read his comment since he couldn't be here. He said, "I won't be able to join tonight as I'm up north. As I previously stated," I'm sorry, "as I stated previously, I'm opposed to putting this on the November ballot. I feel 10 years is too long, given the uncertainty of the economy and other infrastructure needs that may arise. In general, I think a 10-year millage for anything is too long. I would have rather seen this cut in half, same millage rate, but done over five years, than seek a renewal if the work and process is satisfactory." So that was, that was his statement and why he disagreed with the, the other members of the committee.
Excellent. Thank you.
I just want to, I just want to make a quick comment that I think the committee did a really great job putting this together, and I think the recommendation is sound and makes a lot of sense, and I appreciate everybody's work on this.
Yeah, I agree with you. I think 10 years is appropriate. I would have appreciated more streets being done, but again, that first, the very first package that you put together that didn't pass, I thought it was sound back then. I thought it was a very viable solution. But again, it could have hurt some people, but for the collective good, it should have happened. But option two, or should I say Plan C, sounds viable, and I think it's appropriate. If you, if, based on Michael Griffin's statement, if you cut it to five years, then you wouldn't have needed a committee. You could have just had council vote that five years. You wouldn't have needed any committee to do that. So I don't think that's a, that would have been an option to even consider. Yeah. I do have one observation, one observation regarding the culvert. So when you, when you're doing the street and you're going to do the culvert, that metal piece is going to be replaced by PVC, right? Have you guys identified the size of that or the circumference of that?
Yeah. So the actual ditching work that would be done would be the same thing that we were proposing last year. So it will be grading the ditches so that they flow appropriately. Jetting out functional culverts, so jetting them and cleaning them, as well as extended culverts, and then replacing culverts that were, that were non-functional. I believe, and I'll let Scott Ringler comment on this, but I believe when this came up last year, we were talking about replacing them with a smaller culvert so there was less chance of heaving. And I can't remember, Scott, were we proposing metal or PVC?
Typically, an eight-inch PVC pipe.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. All right. And I-
Okay, I'm sorry.
All right. I'm sure that you guys thought about, after we do all these, these changes in culverts, have we thought about some sort of maintenance program for the residents? Because it's their responsibility, obviously, right? So most people don't know how to clean their culverts.
Yeah. I, I, well, I guess two answers to that. The first one is, and I, this is in the recommendation, but, you know, one thing that we recommended is, you know, so we're only going to be, only potentially up to 7.1 miles of culverts will get done. We've got 26 miles of roadway. So we're only, that leaves, you know, 75% roughly, 73% of our culverts aren't going to be addressed. And so what we recommended, especially now that we have, you know, a dedicated code enforcer, is that the code enforcer each year address one quadrant of the city and review the culverts along with their, you know, day-to-day activities to look for things like the root that I gave as the example, you know, across the street from me. Because, you know, while, while, you know, last, in last November, it was, it was a, it was a repair program essentially for the entire city. This time, it's just an improvement. And so there's going to be a lot of unimproved culverts, but we can, we can make a lot of headway and improve the flow just by doing some simple things like removing debris, you know, pointing out roots, you know, there are some code issues, you know, some simple things that we can do to help that. And then to your, your second point, you know, we talked about this last year, is also trying to put together, you know, a video or, you know, maybe a class or something, you know, for, for maintenance of the ditches and the culverts. But, you know, we're waiting first to see if we can get something approved to actually, you know, before we actually do that. So that's, that's part of our education campaign that we would, that we would do.
Okay. Thank you.
For the culverts, so the pipe that runs under some people's driveways that's making them raised, how is that going to affect them? Because I had a resident ask me, you know, at the apron, that it breaks the concrete, and she was going to get a repair, but the people that came to her house to repair it said that the pipe underneath the driveway, the driveway apron needed to be lowered from the city.
Right. And that's, and that's part of what we would be, what we would be doing because we would be replacing the non-functional culvert. So it would be adjusting them to the appropriate height, using a smaller tube, as Scott indicated, which would still provide enough flow, but also allow it to lower it so that there was less chance of it heaving again.
So someone that has that issue right now with the, with their apron being raised, they should, actually, if this passes, that they should wait before trying to get a repair?
Well, that's a decision that they would have to make because, because first of all, you know, they, I mean, if I was in that situation, the first thing I would do is check the road eligibility list. Right? Because make sure that you're, I'm with on one of the streets that's eligible for this, this particular program.
Right.
And then if you are, you know, there's, there's only about a 70% chance, I shouldn't say only, that's a pretty good chance, there's a 70% chance that, you know, you'll be one of those roads that's picked within the next three years. So, you know, it's going to be their, ultimately, their decision.
Of course.
But, but, you know, they can at least get a sense of the likelihood of theirs happening. And I know if it were me personally, for me personally, I would, I would be, you know, doing what I said, lobbying my, my people on my street, if I was on the eligible list, to say, hey, you know, you guys want to, would you guys agree to having your ditches done? You know, get that petition in, get yourself bumped up on the priority, come to council meetings, come to the infrastructure meetings, state your opinion on why you think your road should be done because, you know, we're going to have to take input to figure out which roads to do and to recommend to council, and then council to approve it. So, yeah, I mean, it's ultimately be their decision, but at least they can, they can weigh the possibility.
Okay. Thank you. Are you all set?
Let me just, can we open up Joe Robinson's mic? She was a committee member, just to see if she has anything to add. I think she's the only committee member. Let's see, it's-
I think Mike Keenan's on there.
And Mike Keenan as well, just to see if they have any comments that they want to make.
You can leave Mike Keenan's mic closed.
Hi, Bruce. Hi, y'all. This is Joe. I don't have anything to add. I think the team worked tirelessly to revamp and come back with something that would be more appealing to the residents. And I would venture to say I am, we hoped to have more participation than we, than we got. But the residents that did join us on our calls, they were very vocal in how they felt and what their preferences were. So I don't know that I can say that they represent the entire village, but they, they did weigh in, and I was thankful for the handful that did join us.
All right, thanks. And Mike, you have anything to say? It looks, well, it looks like he's still muted.
Down here.
Yep.
No, I, I kind of agree with Joe. It'd been nice to have more participation, both in when we were having the in-person meetings and in the subsequent Zoom meetings. So, but those that did participate, you know, did either contribute, you know, some thoughts or ideas to it or expressed concern about things. or expressed concern about things. Yeah, I don't know, you know, I totally understand Mike's opposition on, you know, 10 years versus five years. But for me, it was, you know, if we went the five year route, which, you know, Bruce put together, you know, a couple scenarios there, we really would have only accomplished probably almost half or less than half of the seven miles. And that, you know, that's, you know, that's a trickle more than we were probably doing under the current maintenance project of our road. So at least this does at least get to almost a third of the roads of the city. And hopefully after that, after the, you know, the three years or five years passes or the 10 years pass, you know, get enough confidence in the other citizens to crank out another millage to, you know, get another third of the rest of the roads.
Okay, thank you. Is there anything else, Bruce, before we take a motion? Who would like to make the motion on the infrastructure's infrastructure committee's recommendation for the improved, the road improvement on millage?
Just so I'm clear, we're making a motion to or make a recommendation to add this to the ballot or we approve the recommendation of the committee?
We're approving the recommendation to have it added to the ballot in November.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to accept the resolution submitted by the by the infrastructure committee and add it to the ballot in November.
Second.
Okay, it's
Cheryl, can you mute Mike's Mike, Mike's Mike, please?
It's not Mike, it's Don. Don Einstein.
Yeah, I muted myself.
Um, it's been moved in second. Is there any discussion regarding this? So one thing I just want to reiterate is this is simply the council approving it to go on the ballot. It is the residents' responsibility to, or I shouldn't say responsibility, it's up to the residents on voting on this street improvement bond proposal. And that's voting, do you want to have this happen or voting that you don't? But it's up to the residents of how this is going to happen. We are simply approving it to go on the ballot in November.
I agree. I agree with that. Let me expand on that. We, you know, for the residents, we've given you back your government. You have a choice to make a decision on your roads again, and it is up to you. It is not up to us. All we did was we got the committee together and they brainstormed and came back with a recommendation. So please don't get mad at your council for doing this again. The first time we did it, we said it is up to you. We did not make any decisions. Bruce doesn't own a construction company. There's no shady dealings in the back. These are all quotes from our town hall from residents. We're not making any money on any of this. This is up to you.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else want to give their PSA? Hearing none, can we have roll call, please?
Roll call. Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor?
Yeah.
And Councilmember Siddiqui?
Yes.
Motion carry.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I might have gone too far. Correct me if I'm wrong, but the next is going to be the next action item is a resolution of the City of Lathar Village concur in the rules and regulations concerning industrial pretreatment programs as adopted by the Great Lakes Water Authority?
You went too far.
That's what I thought I did. That's what I mean.
Yep, that's right.
I thought I did, but yeah, okay.
There were two. Cleaning and televising programs.
Right, so this one accepted a motion, I mean, consideration for a motion to accept lowest bid in award contract for 2020 sewer cleaning and televising program.
So mayor and council, this was included in the fiscal year 2021 budget for at the level of 120,000 from the sewer fund for this program to clean and televise 35,500 linear square feet of sanitary sewers that are located north of I-696. And Scott is on the on the Zoom meeting as well, our city engineer. And he solicited the bids, received five, and making the recommendation that it go to the lowest unqualified bidder of diversified infrastructure services for the amount of $112,412.50.
So I'll make a motion to approve the 2020 sewer cleaning and televising program for the amount not to exceed $112,412.50.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, did we, I assume that there were were some qualitative measures that were looked at in comparing the the four submitting vendors as opposed to just price? I mean, we do we know anything about the chosen vendor in terms of their their quality and their reputation and so forth?
Well, I was able to get all the two references and both had very positive things to say about them. I have never worked with them. They are actually out of Wisconsin, but they have a, they're a pretty big company with a lot of crews. And we've worked in Michigan and Ohio and in our area.
But they're out of Fond du Lac, correct? Wisconsin?
Yes, they are.
Okay, just a quick question. Was this a competitive bid? I mean, did you have more than one bid on the, well, it says five. So do you know, this is the the lowest one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, the second bidder was, I think it's on the bid tab.
It's Corby Energy Services at 168,887.
Okay, sorry, I didn't scroll. Okay.
And just curious, there was none that was that was competitive in Michigan?
Well, Corby and Pipe Tech are both out of Michigan. National Power Rattings out of Chicago and Elite Pipeline, I believe, is out of the Grand Rapids area.
But in order for us to go with the Michigan company, we're looking at a 50,000, almost 60, almost.
163?
50,000.
Yeah, 50,000. I was carrying the one again, you know. So I just want to make sure that, you know, it's on the record that we did try to go with a Michigan-based company, but it would have been more expensive to go with the Michigan-based company. That's it. Any other discussions?
Yeah, just one other question. So the two Michigan companies, obviously, we did this kind of jetting last year, I believe. Did any of those two do the jetting for the city?
Well, the the last jetting, I believe, was in 2013, and it was south of I-696. And Corby Energy Services actually did that work.
Corby did, okay. All right, so obviously, Scott, you know, we had some issues with residents regarding the backup. So is there any anything in place that we could maybe do a pre-test or they do any kind of pre-test prior to actually executing the job so we won't have repeated issues?
Well, I'm not sure what you mean by flooding, but
Yeah, can you explain that just a little bit more? I'm looking at other people's faces too, so.
Well, south of I-696, a resident in particular, when this jetting happened in the sewer, they had backup in their basement and all the water came through through their 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 house, right, in the basement. And they didn't know at the time that that jetting was happening. And so when they contacted DPW, someone from DPW made that statement that, oh, yeah, jetting was happening, and they weren't aware of that. So even though this issue hasn't been resolved with the city, I think the resident is choosing not to pursue it. But they wanted to make clear that if that's going to happen in the future, we need to bring residents to that attention, make them aware and/or at least do some sort of test process prior to executing the job.
So Ian, not common, but not uncommon either. So when when they jet these sewers, they have to use some pretty high velocity water, and it builds up pressure.
Right.
And sometimes that pressure backs up into basements and restrooms and stuff. If we do know of them cases, we have provisions in the contract for the contractor to clean that, sanitize it and make repairs and reimbursements for anything that's lost. That's part of the insurance portion. I mean, good question. It's it's uncommon, but but it does happen.
Yeah, I just want to make sure the city is is covered. So this 112, if we happen to have that issue again, is the city going to be covered?
Well, like I said, we do have provisions that they have to get in there and clean, clean up any and sanitize any basements or restrooms or anything that had an occurrence. And there's also insurance that the contractor has to provide.
Yep, okay, thank you.
But, you know, if we don't know of an occurrence, we can't do much, so.
Yeah.
You know, the city will have maps, make sure, I don't know who gets the calls, Kelda or somebody that, you know, they're somewhat aware of the process and where the contractor is working that week.
Yep, I agree with that.
Are there any further discussion? Hearing none, someone would like to take a motion, make a motion?
We have a motion in a second already.
I'm sorry. I'm so sorry. I'm trying to balance.
No, that's okay.
So thank you for being here to keep us on our toes. So we'll take a roll call at this time, Madam Clerk.
Sure. Roll call, Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor?
Yeah.
Councilmember Siddiqui?
Yes.
And Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Motion carry.
I'm skipping something. So the next one, thank you. The next one is about the water, the resolution of the City of Lathar Village to concur in the rules and regulations concerning industrial pretreatment program as adopted by the, or GLEWA, Great Lakes Water Authority.
Mayor and council, as the mayor had indicated, the Great Lakes Water Authority implements and enforces the industrial pretreatment program, the IPP, and the City of Lathar Village is a member of that district. And it's in regards to the regulatory control that's mandated for the permit. So they had made some changes specifically in regards to the regulations of PFAS components. And they are asking all of the member communities to adopt the updated rules.
Okay, thank you. Anyone would like to, someone please make a motion? The suggested motions at the bottom of page 102?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept the adoption of the resolution of the City of Lathar Village to confer in the rules and regulations concerning industrial pretreatment program as adopted by the Great Lakes Water Authority.
Thank you.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, can we have roll call, please?
Roll call, Mayor Pro Tim Cantor?
Yeah.
Councilmember Siddiqui?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
And Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Motion carry.
Next up, we have the resolution to approve independent contractor agreement for building janitorial and grounds maintenance services. City Administrator?
Yes, this is in regards to Cliff's contract. So as you can imagine, this changed significantly in the environment of COVID-19. He's not doing the much related to the community room or other rentals. But his role in regards to sanitizing and even some of the grounds maintenance has increased significantly. So we modified his base contract for the building janitorial and grounds maintenance services to reflect those additional duties. And shortly you'll be receiving a separate contract relative to the work that's related to the community room and rentals. So what you have before you is a one-year contract that's renewable on an annual basis in regards to his services.
Thank you.
Make a motion or a resolution to approve independent contractor and agreement for building janitorial and grounds maintenance services.
A second.
It moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Roll call, Councilmember Siddiqui?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tim Cantor?
Yeah.
Motion carry.
Thank you. Next up, it'll be the motion to elect members to the MML Workers Compensation Fund Board of Trustees.
And this is the annual motion to appoint or elect the members to the MML Workers Compensation Board. The two candidates this year are Marlon Brown, Mayor Pro Tim from Mason, and Penny Hill, Assistant Manager for Traverse City. These are for four-year terms expiring, well, beginning in October 1, 2020. This also author, your motion should authorize the city clerk to notify MML of your decision.
Okay, thank you. Your motion?
I'll make a motion to affirm the nominations as provided by the MML Workers Competition. Authorize the city clerk to notify the MML before August 2020.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, why is Lathar Village tasked to do this?
All communities are tasked to do this, if I'm not mistaken.
That answers the question, so everyone is aware.
We're a member of MML.
Yes.
So if we didn't do it, they're probably still going to get.
Of course, of course.
It just affirms their nominations, right?
Yeah.
Any other? Hearing none, can I have a roll call, please?
Roll call, Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor?
Yeah.
And Councilmember Siddiqui?
Yes.
Motion carry.
Thank you. Next up, or recommendation, I guess, is to extend sunset period for marijuana establishment. Who would like to introduce that? So I'll call on city attorney.
It's a stalemate. Well, this this comes in light of the marijuana subcommittee, subcommittee making a recommendation at the last study session, the city council. I indicated that based on that discussion, my recommendation was that, and just so that everyone knows what we're talking about, the the recommendation from the marijuana subcommittee was that City of Lathar Village allow for marijuana establishments, the number and type to be determined at a later point. But that they were recommending that the city opt in to that to that industry. It was the general consensus from council that they supported that recommendation. And so based on that input, and again, I would just like council to confirm that this evening, that that was in fact, my interpretation was correct. But based on that recommendation and feedback, the next step in the process is to begin drafting the appropriate ordinances, applications, zoning regulations and procedures by which the city can evaluate and determine which which entities will will receive licenses, how many licenses will be available and licenses for which type of business. So that process is going to take a number of months. Our city planner has, and it's included in your packet, has provided a very initial draft of a timetable approximately 12 months to come up with all the necessary documentation. So based on that, my recommendation is to amend the current ordinance which extends the sunset provision, sunset period for 12 months. This will be 12 months from adoption of this proposed ordinance. So what that effectively does is give give city staff and consultants time to get everything in place. It likely will be done sooner than 12 months. And if that is in fact the case, then city council is prepared to act on it at that time. At that time, they can do that and end the sunset earlier than the 12 months. But again, based on the planner's timeline and just the level of involvement that these ordinances are going to take to draft, my recommendation is to extend it for 12 months.
Good, thank you. Who would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to, actually, would it be to,
I think it's at the bottom.
Yeah. Just trying to think of how to technically word it. I'll make a motion to extend, to adopt an ordinance, the, amend, well, Scott, can I have some guidance here?
Yeah, sorry, your audio was cutting out there. But really what this is, is this is an order, the motion that we're looking for is to approve the first reading of the ordinance to amend Chapter 18 businesses adding Article 6 Marijuana Establishment, Section 18.281 Marijuana Establishments Prohibited.
Okay, yeah, all right. So I'll make a motion to adopt the first reading of the ordinance to amend Chapter 18, businesses adding Article 6 Marijuana Establishments, Section 18.281 Marijuana Established Prohibited with a expiration clause of 12 months from adoption.
Do you have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion?
Just a quick thing. On that summary that we were first looking at, I don't know if you need to correct this or not, but the vote on July 8 was 4 to 0 with 1 absent. I think it said 5 to 0 on that. And then this Marijuana Committee reconfirmed that recommendation on July 23 with the vote of 4 to 1, with 1 against. So I don't know if we need to correct anything.
Yeah, we need to make that consistent.
Okay. Any further discussion? So I'm still concerned about 12 months, and here's why. I think that we did this before, where we said we were going to do the 18 months, and we took the 18 months. So, and, and it, to me, it seems like we kind of, we weren't on it, you know, to be ready for the sunset in September, if that's right where we were prepared, you know. And we had, I think that was enough time to kind of come up with a reasonable recommendation, even though I know the recommendation right now is reasonable. But I think that one thing that Councilman Ferguson said earlier, which makes sense now that I sit here and think about it, was, you know, a half a medium was maybe nine months. And I know that our city attorney suggested 12 months, but I'm really concerned about it taking the full 12 months, and it kind of gives you the look of you're kicking this down the road. That's just my thoughts.
Well, as you know from the study session, I share your concern as well. But the tempering factor is that when we did the 18 months, we were hoping to, you know, to have substantial data at the, you know, after a year or so. But the one thing that we do know is that Laura, you know, didn't issue regulations for a year, which, you know, meant that everything was pushed back and, you know, we didn't have a chance to get the data. So there was, there was some tempering as that, and I do agree, you know, that 12 months does seem a little bit long, like we're pushing the can down the road. But I would much rather set the expiration longer and, you know, aggressively monitor this so that we move, continually move it forward and be done in six months, eight months, nine months, and just, you know, issue the new ordinances and cancel out this ordinance, which we can do, as opposed to putting in nine months and then finding out that we really need 10 months, and now we got to go back and do another, you know, extension, which is going to make it look even worse. My thoughts anyways.
Do we really need 12 months? I guess that's the question I asked earlier. And nine months is a compromise. I'm just saying, okay, so, you know, in hindsight, we did start late in getting the committee together and getting the data out there. So what I'm saying is now that we have the data together, we've made our, the recommendation, the committee has made a recommendation, we're really ahead of the curve. And we've already preloaded some of the information because we've seen the draft, right? Now we have to just find out what's going to fit. I don't think 12 months is not, I don't think it will take 12 months to really find out what fits Lathar Village when we have so many examples we can actually extract from.
I disagree with that. I think, I think if you're going to want to get adequate public input
and have input from your planning commission, I think it's going to take more time. If City Council simply wants to copy and paste it from another community, we can do that. But City Council is then going to be stuck with a limited ability to regulate those businesses. If it hasn't done the adequate preparation and gotten the feedback and looked at the concerns and some of the other pitfalls that other communities have had, then they're going to have to live with, live with those results. So if that's the route that council would like to take, then we can amend this and shorten the timeframe and kind of cut the corners. But again, I don't see, I really don't see what the rush is. There's not, these businesses aren't going to go away. They will, I can guarantee that they will still apply, and there will be more applicants than there are licenses available. So rushing it in my mind makes, makes really no sense. It only potentially hurts the city. So giving adequate time to do, to do the appropriate homework and get the appropriate input, get everything drafted in place, to me, I don't, you know, it's really not about a compromise on timing. It's just having enough time to get it done. This is not something that the city has even started to look into as far as drafting ordinances because up until last study session, there was no indication which direction the city want, City Council wanted to go. So it's just, again, I'm strongly recommending a minimum of 12 months.
Yeah, I just, I just, I have to agree. I mean, I just, I'd like, I'd like to see it done in six to nine months, absolutely. But, you know, we can't rush this. I mean, if we rush this and we leave a loophole or we don't cover all our bases, you know, then we, you know, we get legal challenges, which is going to cost us money and so forth. I just, I just think, you know, let's give ourselves the cushion to have 12 months, but, you know, just keep pushing it forward. I mean, you know, we can, you know, call for an update, you know, move every meeting, you know, move it down the road or move further down the road without delaying it. But, you know, it's, I just think we can move briskly, carefully, and, you know, still have that cushion. And like Scott and Jill have recommended, if, if we get, you know, get this ready in seven months, eight months, whatever, you know, then we, we implement the ordinance and we're good to go. But, you know, I just don't, I don't want to see ourselves in the same situation again.
So I agree, I agree with Scott's comments as well. I just don't, I don't, if I'm getting a recommendation from our city attorney and from the planning commission that this is going to take 12 months, then I would like to, like, listen to that and kind of follow that. I don't see a need where we need to rush things. As long as the City Council has decided on a way forward on, yes, we're going to look at doing this, and now we're going to create ordinances, and let's take the right time to do that. So I don't think 12 months is too long. And I think it's 12 months from like this, the next reading, right? So isn't that going to be in August? So it's probably not going to be 12 months from September and, but, you know, it's really, you know, 12 months from August. So I don't think it's, a couple of months to me is not a big deal, and I think it's worth it to do, make sure we do it right and wait that time.
If I may, if I, if I may just interject to, just to strongly support everything the city attorney said and all of his reasons. You know, it isn't that it's going to take 12 months to develop ordinances. There are a lot of procedural requirements that we have to adhere to, some of which are the planning commission's review, the planning commission's public hearing, city council action. So there'll be some parts of this that you can just do as council, but there will be zoning issues that have to go through these other criteria. We've got noticing requirement. So that's why I put the timeline together too, because I felt like, kind of like what you were saying. You know, you had this 18-month window and people were working on it. And we could say the same thing, that we were doing that with these zoning amendments. But this is, you can see in a month by month, and it's just a little conservative. It's giving all of the reviewing bodies the opportunity to be thoughtful without taking too much time, to give the public the opportunity to participate in this, and then adhere to those procedural requirements that we have to do pursuant to state law.
Okay, thanks for the insight, Jill. Okay, I, just based on the explanation, okay, I'm comfortable with 12 months. I do have a question for Jill and Scott. So is it standard protocol that once we make, well, obviously the committee made a recommendation, will you then need to draw on our expertise to send you recommendations on the ordinances, Salim and I?
That's what I had, well, and not just the two of you, but really the full council. We want the direction to be from council, and that was the first item in the, in the timeline.
Okay.
And I said August, because I didn't know if you'd be prepared today to get into that. But if you can do this next month, you've talked about the types of marijuana facilities, and we talked a little bit about the anticipated concerns. But to dial in on that a little bit more, for example, do you want to see these uses clustered together so that they're concentrated in a certain area? Or do you want to see them spread out? Does it matter? That would be the kinds of things that would be helpful as the city attorney and I start drafting language and as the planning commission starts reviewing it. What we want to make sure that we're avoiding is the planning commission working on ordinance language that comes to you and you all say, well, this doesn't really even address our issues. Or when we take it to public hearing, that we aren't articulating really the outcomes. And I had mentioned that during our study session. But we really want to be clear on what we're trying to accomplish with this, as well as it's also really important that the community understand that council has identified certain issues that we want to make sure that we mitigate. Because when we go to the public with this language, we can say, we've anticipated parking is going to be a problem. Traffic might be a concern. Safety might be a concern. And here's how this proposed ordinance language addresses those items. So if we are all on the same page with that, this process goes much more smoothly. And we may be able to certainly get this done earlier. So we want to make sure we have that constant communication. And I think I tried to include that in the timeline too, that, you know, when there's initial drafts that go to the planning commission, it can go to council too and get some feedback. And that if council is working on issues, that planning commission knows what's going on, so that the two of you are working together. Maybe there's even a joint meeting that we have, no pun intended, for this language as we're drafting it, where we can talk about it as a group so that we all make sure we're on the same page. So those are just some of the ways that we can do it.
To even say that, we can do that in a short amount of time too, and have some special meetings so you don't have to do the 12 months. So just backing up a little bit, maybe I got spoiled from the infrastructure committee, is that, that's what, that was my idea in asking for us to have these committees, is to have the beginning of the ordinances and the thoughts, you know, kind of put together already. And so to me, that's why we're here now, because we now have to come together to do this, which we had, again, kind of, I know everyone's, you know, said, because Laura was late with it, but there still was time after that to start putting our, putting our heads together to do, or the group to put their heads together to figure out an ordinance. And so again, that is my main concern in going through, looking at the process of it. So even if we did nine months, we're still down to the, with regular meetings, with regular meetings, we're down to March, and that still is a council review, public hearing, and all that. So just as we can do the special meetings when it comes to 12 months, we could do special meetings in nine months. My main concern is, and it, to me, is almost human nature. If you know that you don't have a project due until the end of August, at least in my world, when I was in school, I started it maybe the middle of August and knew that I had two, two weeks to hustle. And I'm just really, I mean, just based off, and there's no offense to anyone, but it's just based off of what we've already gone through. That's just my, my, and I really just hate the idea of, like, you know, when I read it in the paper, it really looks like we're just kicking this down the road.
Well, and that's why, really, I thought of doing the timeline, because it really does show you the steps that are needed. And so now the attorney and I can be looking at this. We have stuff to do every month. So we will be giving you information. We will be giving the planning commission information. And we will make sure that there are, that there's discussions that happen. I think, well, anyway, I'll just leave it at that. I think that it's not an open-ended, like, okay, well, we're going to have this done by July. Every month, we have something to do.
Okay.
Yeah, and you know, Kelly, you know, once, once something gets on my list, you guys all know that I don't leave it alone. I bring it up every single meeting until it's done. So it's already, it's already typed in my list.
We did do that. I mean, it's nothing.
Yeah, but this is different than before though, Kelly. Before, the laws and regulations weren't even out. I mean, now, everything's out there. You just got to settle in and do it.
The laws, before Michigan wasn't out. To have the data from other states, like what was going on with Colorado, that was out. They had that.
Yeah, but that didn't, that didn't, you know, that, that's not the main deciding factor.
No, that's not the main deciding factor, but I'm saying some of the, some of the footwork could have been done ahead of time.
I'm just not worried about people saying you're kicking it down the road. I don't think that's a big deal. I think we just, we do the right thing. We take the time. We take the 12 months and we do it. That's my.
Yeah, just, just a couple of questions. So Jill, this process that we have up on the screen, shouldn't this be a twofold process? We have an application requirement, and we also have an ordinance requirement. I don't see the application process.
That's under number seven. So I was thinking that we could be doing that concurrently with the ordinance. If we have an idea that we're narrowing in on our draft, our final draft language by the end of the year, by December, then I think we can start with that initial outline for applications and then be refining that as we're refining the ordinance language. So that by the end of that 12 months, I think we'll have everything wrapped up together. Because that's the goal, is we want to have all of it done in the 12 months so that you don't have to extend your sunset again.
Okay, okay. I guess the next observation is, so for item 1 through 13, I think we really need to at least put timelines on these things. If you're expecting council to give you a recommendation to kick this thing off in the next council meeting or study session, then we need to, really need to know that, and we all need to get information or send you information or something, something to that effect. So I think we really should try to at least establish a timeline for 1 through 13.
And we can put dates on that. That's pretty easy. We have all the meeting, and we could, that'll be just based on your regular meeting schedules.
And I think that's another thing that could be, sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
I just said, that's something that city council can discuss their next study session. We can spend more time going through each one of these steps. And like I said, this, you know, I'm really glad Jill did this and thought to do this because I wish I would have, but I'm glad she did. So at least it's there. But, yeah, thank you. But, so it is something, it's a visual, it's, because I can say it's going to take time, it's going to take time. But this actually lays it out. And yeah, there, you know, maybe we can combine three and four, or, you know, four and five, and move them up, you know, from November to September. And that's something we can have a more detailed discussion about. And yes, a lot of this stuff can overlap. We can work on the application itself while we're drafting the ordinances, while we're also drafting the zoning language and looking at also the potential number and types and location, parking, traffic. There's a lot, there's a lot of just, you know, I don't know if Scott Ringer is still on the, on the call or not, but I mean, a traffic study, impact study, I mean, sometimes those take months to get back. And if we're going to require that, I don't know if we would do it previously or prior to an applicant. But, but it is something that we may want to consider. We've had them done in the past for certain sites. And the potential impact from that was, was, it killed the project. So we don't want to set ourselves up for failure and say, okay, we're going to allow it in these districts. And then when the applicant goes through the process, that's time and money that they're going to have to spend. And it's creating delays in the application process is going to deter people from doing business with the city. So we want to. So we want to make it so that our process, we've already thought of all those problems, or as many of them as we can, and make the process move as quickly and smoothly for an applicant, when they, when they, once they drop their application off with their check, you know, and we're, you know, going to be asking for a significant dollar amount for these licenses, they're going to expect a certain amount of performance and, you know, a quick turnaround on that. So it's, again, I think it's invaluable to put the time in now on the front end, so that when we do start processing these applications, we can move quickly, efficiently, and we know what, it looks like we know what we're doing. So that's, that's a key, you know, put the time in now, that way we're prepared when we start accepting those applications.
Yeah, just an observation on item one. So Salim, not Salim, but the committee that was led by Salim, we already have that data for item one subset A and B. So maybe Salim and the committee, we can probably go through that and then give you pros and cons, and give you, you know, a couple sheets or a sheet per business model, if that's what you're looking for.
Actually, I'm going to interrupt there, Ian. I think at this point, I think it's appropriate for council. I mean, you guys have the information, but I think this is a council discussion at this point. And to that end, I mean, what do people think about, you know, maybe doing a special meeting next week to do kind of a kickoff and discuss, you know, get Jill and Scott the, you know, the information that they need to start the process? So again, kind of kick it off.
Yeah.
Oh, we have a study session next Monday, so it wouldn't have to be special.
Oh, we do, we do, okay.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Okay, so I guess we can't do it next week, can we?
You could, and you could make it the primary agenda item for your study session.
Right.
Okay.
So before we even get into the agreement of it, I want to make sure that when it comes to this particular subject, I think that all, council also needs to be there. So there needs to be, maybe perhaps send out a doodle anyway, just in case we're not have all attendance, you know, for Monday too.
Yeah.
Because, I mean, technically, just to give you an idea, that's the reason why we have odd numbers on boards and things like that. So like right now, if Ian and I say no, and Bruce and Salim say yes on this, you know, what happens?
I understand.
So, I mean, that was my one thing about the meeting, because I think we need to spend a lot of time on this, and I agree, Monday would be a good, a good time, but I think that we need to also make sure that everyone's there. So Cheryl, you can also send out a, one to make sure everyone's going to be here Monday, and then also send out a doodle poll, a doodle poll of what's a really good date to have just a discussion about, about this.
Yeah.
I guess I'm not following, in terms of why we just don't do it on our meeting on Monday, at our study session on Monday. I mean, we're not voting on anything on Monday, and hopefully everybody will be there.
I don't want to have a select few making decisions, you know, that's why, you know, and I want to make sure that everyone's there. And I'm saying that we will talk about it on Monday, making sure that everyone's there, but just, you just having your ducks in the row, saying that they're not going, you know, say someone's not going to be there? We have it already in place to have a doodle poll, what's another day that we can do for a special meeting just around marijuana? Does that make sense yet?
It makes sense.
But hopefully we can do it on Monday.
Yeah, it makes sense, but at the same time, we, you know, people have to own up to their obligations, you know? It's, we have a scheduled meeting, and it's on the agenda, it's in someone's calendar, we just need, people have to just show up, because that's, we, all of this stuff keeps coming, and we can't just stop just to wait. And I'm not talking about marijuana, I'm talking about other issues, like the Infrastructure Committee and, you know, everything else. So we just got to schedule the meeting. If it's scheduled, then we just bank on people showing up, that's it.
All righty, then. I just, again, just reiterating, I think that this is a subject that's too important to our city. I think that it is, it could possibly change the dynamic that our city, and I think that we all just need to be a part of the discussion.
I agree totally.
That's my only thing with that.
Yeah.
Is there any?
Yeah, yeah, just one of the things. So I guess the data we have that we had collected, just so we can help assist moving it forward, I guess Salim and I would have to put pros and cons and then send it to council so you can review, and then we can discuss at the next meeting. I mean, we're not doing anything extra, we're just taking the data we have and just kind of making, making it clearer for people to understand it or articulate it.
Oh, I was going to say, it's pretty straightforward.
Okay, yeah, I know, I mean.
I mean, I don't think you guys.
You're getting more straightforward than that. I mean, just trying to help it out.
I don't think you guys need to do extra work, you know, for us. We can read a, we can read a four-page document.
Okay, that works, that works, okay.
All right, we decided to accept the committee's recommendation, right? But we're just, and.
Well, we haven't voted.
We haven't accepted the.
Yeah, that's not, that's not the motion on the table right now. The motion on the table is to accept the first reading of this ordinance.
Yeah, we just extend the sunset period, right?
Right.
Correct.
So we're not going to do that, is that what we're saying, until we have everyone there?
No, that's, no, we're just, the only thing we're doing right now is just doing the sunset. We have not, we're just extending the sunset. We have not done the recommendation yet.
Okay, got it.
I get confused. I get confused.
I know, it is confusing. I mean, I think that we should go with, you know, we should, nevermind. So, yeah, we're only, we're only voting on the sunset right now, period.
Let's do that.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm all set, thank you.
Yeah, do it.
Okay.
So roll call. I mean, and I'm sorry, before you do that, this is to extend the sunset of opting out for marijuana for nine months. I'm just trying to do a summary so everyone will know where we're at and what we're doing.
12.
Excuse me, 12, sorry. See? Oh, yep, see, thank you, I needed that one.
No problem.
Yep.
Roll call. Mayor Garrett?
No.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor?
Yeah.
Councilmember Saviki?
Yes.
And Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Welcome.
So if you see me in two places, my computer looked like it was about to shut down, and I didn't want to be in the middle of that discussion and have it shut down, so just to let you all know that. No, anybody else. City Administrator, your report, please.
Mayor and Council, just briefly, a couple of updates. The Loving Lather Village relieved many grants available for local small businesses. The deadline for filing is July 31st at 12 noon, and the grants are available in amounts of $500 to $1,500. Information is on the website. The recreation master plan is open for 30-day comment period, so the draft plan is available on the website as well. The 2020 census, we have 87.2% response rate so far, that puts us fourth in the county and ahead of Berkeley. We are officially in a contest with Berkeley to see who comes in the highest.
Nice.
Just to get people motivated to respond, and you can go, it only takes a couple of minutes, and go to my2020census.gov in order to participate in the census. And as a reminder, pretty much all of the events are canceled here, as well as rentals through the end of August. And we also have canceled the food trucks that were scheduled on Wednesday. Most of them were canceling at the last minute, so it was just too difficult to coordinate it, so we just went ahead and did that. And if you look around the downtown, the city hall area, you'll see that we have the new planters and flower hanging baskets installed around through our DDA, so we're very happy to have that beautification effort through the DDA now out there for everyone to enjoy the flowers.
Thanks.
And that concludes my report.
You're on mute, Kelly.
Mute.
Next up, city attorney, I'm talking over there, though, I can hear.
I think, I think I've talked enough for tonight, so, you have nothing for me.
Thank you. I know you're trying to get to a birthday party, right?
Hopefully he's in bed.
I was going to say, it is almost nine o'clock. So now reports from boards. First report, marijuana study session, which I don't know if you really have an update since.
I mean, just, you know, we had a meeting last Thursday to reconfirm, we did some further research just to, at the request of the city council and the committee, we confirmed the vote of four to one in favor of recommending that the city allow marijuana facilities to operate in the city. So that's, that's the vote, we've talked about it here, we're going to extend the sunset, we will work with the city council now, work with our city attorney, with the Planning Commission, with whatever we need to, to make sure the necessary ordinances are in place. That's all I got.
Thanks. Infrastructure Committee, do you have anything?
Not really. The only thing I would just say is that now that this has been approved to be on the ballot, over the next week or two, we'll start to disseminate information via the website initially. You know, we'll get the recommendation out there, I've got a, you know, similar to last time, how much will this cost me document, and, you know, a few other things that we can, we can put out there, the map of eligible streets and so forth. And then we'll begin working, especially as we get closer to the election, of doing some town halls and some other education processes, let people, or to help people to fully understand what this proposal means and how it'll affect them.
Thank you.
Hey Kelly, can I jump in again?
Sure.
Just last thing, I did want to just point out to everyone that we do have all of our research and information on the website, so if you want to go to the city website under committees, and you can find the marijuana study group, and see our research, our summary, and all the detailed links to various analysis, reports, and studies, et cetera, so I encourage everyone to go take a look. Thanks.
Thank you. Planning Commission?
I can let you know the Planning Commission is continuing to work on the comprehensive plan. We are going to be sharing a good chunk of planning material with the Planning Commission at their August meeting. Hopefully they'll have a couple of site plans to look at, also for some properties on Southfield Road. We hope to get the comprehensive plan wrapped up September. There's a reviewing period with that, and public hearings later in the year, so that's sort of the timeline for Planning Commission's work on the master plan.
Thank you. Does anyone have any information from Simcod?
So updates.
Okay. And then I'm going to throw in the Parks and Rec, that report. Cheryl, do you want to go over that?
The report from Parks and Recreation?
Yes.
I pretty much highlighted most of the information that I wanted to pull out of it. They've been heavily working on getting the parks together, and some of the infrastructure projects that were approved, and trying to get those going. And what else was there worth mentioning in there? Some of the upgrades to the building, some of them are COVID-related, some of them are just, it's an opportunity to start working on the building, so there's some painting and housekeeping and improvement of the lights and the ceiling tiles that'll be going on. And as mentioned before, the rentals are not in effect until August 31st, until after August 31st. And even then, we'll take a look at if we can safely accommodate groups and what participation within our building will look like.
Okey-dokey, thank you.
Can I ask one question about the recreation, related to recreation? I noticed on Chris's update, he mentioned something about a dog, a temporary dog park, that was the first time I had heard about that. What's, what's the, what's going on there?
I think he had mentioned it in the prior report, but across from the soccer field, there's a fenced-in area. I guess it's the tennis court, whatever that, it's a fenced-in area, so making some minor modifications to an already existing space to see if that could accommodate a small dog park, and we'll just see how that works. So getting those rules and regulations and everything in place.
Yeah.
Isn't that the hockey area, the hockey fenced-in area?
It's the small one, kind of across from the hockey fence, there's another fenced-in area.
Oh, right, yeah, okay.
Okay, any unfinished or new business?
Just one unfinished business. Salim and I would like to thank the committee, Marijuana Committee, for holding fast to doing the research, gathering the data, and reviewing, finalizing it collectively. It was a great group of people that we worked with, and I just wanted to extend my appreciation and look forward to working with those individuals again. It was really, really a productive way of finalizing the data.
Thank you.
100%, thanks, yeah, 100%.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I was just curious, is there any update on the business corridor sidewalk program?
Not at the present time. I've been communicating with Scott in regards to the initial steps and getting that set up, so we're moving towards that.
Thanks.
One last thing, any updates on the wall in the alley?
Yes, I communicated with the building official today, and he had contacted the contractor. They needed to order some additional materials, the bricks in particular, and he is also in, the contractors in touch with the business owner for the adjacent building, because those, the wall needs to connect, so they're moving forward.
Okay, thank you.
Is there like a timeline for that, or can we establish one? I know that Councilmember Ferguson's been asking that repeatedly, thoroughly, by all different types of medias, so I'm just wondering if there is a, like a timeline?
They understand that we want them to complete it as expeditiously as possible. They do have to get the delivery of the bricks, and we are monitoring it on a very regular basis. There are ongoing issues between the property owner and the contractor, which most likely is going to result in a lien and a lawsuit or something even.
Oh, wow.
But at least he's committed to completing the project.
Is the intent for the, just out of curiosity, for the color of the brick to match the existing color? Because I thought at one point they were waiting for the appropriate colored bricks, and now I noticed, you know, the original wall was like a cream color, now this other one's a bright red brick?
Now, you know, there's two walls technically, one's facing the residence, and the other, there's a parallel wall that's facing the business at parking lot. I'm just happy to get some bricks up there.
Yeah.
This is Gary.
I think Kelly is on mute, or we lost her?
No.
Did we lose her?
I'm bringing her back in.
Yeah, we're making her panelists.
Okay.
Her other device died, I think.
We got the Pro Tim.
Thank you, I'm sorry, I, it's, I don't know what's going on with my computer. You all can hear me, right?
Yes.
Okay, good. So I heard about the wall, so was there any other new business or unfinished business?
If I could, Madam Mayor?
Yep.
Interject concerning the election?
Um, hold that thought for just two seconds, for two seconds, because I know that I want to get to public comments before we.
Oh, okay, that's fine.
So I thought before I lost my other computer that I saw Joe had her hand up.
I think so.
That was from before. I'm good.
Not Jill, Joe.
Joe.
Yep.
Joe Robinson. Joe, Joe Robinson.
Yes, I did have my hand up and I had the same.
Oh, we lost her. Try it again. I think you're on mute, Joe.
How about now?
Yes, go ahead.
So my question was, uh, whether or not, uh, we would be doing in-person voting, um, August 3rd and November, I mean, uh, in August and in November. Uh, right now, yes, we are voting August 4th in person. And I've not heard otherwise about November, but I'm thinking, you know, I don't know if it would change, but right now, yes, we're both. Unless something changes, but definitely for August 4th, the polls will be open. Okay, great. And one, one more question. Where can I find the, the, um, listing of the city ordinances?
I did, I posted a link in the chat. It's on a website called municode, M-U-N-I-C-O-D-E dot com. And then you, there's, uh, you can search by, by city, by state and city, and that's where we post all our ordinances. Also, I believe there's also a link on our website to our ordinances.
Okay, can I petition to get a code changed?
Uh, yeah, you can.
All right, cool. Thank you.
That would, that would go to, that would go to the Planning Commission though, right, Scott?
If it's, if it's a city ordinance, it would come to City Council. If it's a zoning ordinance, then it would go to, um, it would initiate at the Planning Commission. But yeah, if, if there's ever any concern, or any, uh, first, first step would be contact the, the mayor. Um, and then the mayor can bring it to council because it's, a lot of times ordinances, council will agree with the proposed revision. Um, and, and then it eliminates having to go through the referendum process. But if it's something that you come to council and they don't agree with it, then yeah, there's always the option under the code of ordinances to initiate a petition to have, uh, ordinance amended.
Thank you.
Joe, um, you have my email address?
I do. I, I, I'm, this is personal for me. Um, just trying to park my truck somewhere close to home instead of having to drive 45 miles away to Ann Arbor. And it's a commercial vehicle. It's a semi. And so I, I, I know it, you know, it, it might be impossible to change it for just one person, but I'm willing to give it a try.
So that's gonna be in the zoning ordinance. Uh, you're, you're referencing the probation on overnight parking of commercial vehicles. That's under the zoning. Yeah, that's a zoning, that would be a zoning ordinance amendment. I would have to go to Planning Commission.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, and I'm guessing, cause I don't have the agenda in front of me, but at least we're on the, the tail end of it, so I can figure it out. So does anyone from council have any further questions or any comments? Okay. Um, I, I do have a, one question that I see that's come up and there was a complaint about it. And that was with the jewelry building. Did we, and I don't know, I guess this is the right place for, uh, the jewelry building that's on.
What's it called, Mayor Garrett?
Yes, um, just today, um, one of our code enforcement officers, um, visited the business and spoke with the owner and they did, um, supply their business license application and paid the fee. Uh, the building official is still, um, prepared to issue the notification of violation, assuming that that is an accurate interpretation of business that is being conducted if it's not in compliance with our, our zoning ordinances.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. Does anybody else have any other comments on the council? Okay, um, Madam Clerk. You're up.
Oh, thank you. Just a few minutes to, um, discuss some, uh, very important points about Election Day. Election Day is August 4th and the polls will open at 7:00 AM and close at 8:00 PM. There will be in-person voting and for August and for November, as far as we know right now. I don't know if that's going to change, but for right now, there will be in-person voting for August and November. So the important dates are, the last day that I can mail out absentee voter ballots will be this Friday before 5:00 PM. So if you have not received your absentee voter ballot and you would like to request one and you want me to mail it, then the last time that I can mail it is this Friday, the 31st. 31st before 5:00 PM. Also, I'll be open, this clerk's office will be open on this coming Saturday, August 1st, from 7:00 AM until 3:00. So if you'd like to come in and vote and pick up your ballot, you can do so at that time. Monday, the day before the election, I'll be here from 8:00 AM until 4:00 to issue ballots. The office is open until 4:30, but I can only issue ballots between 8:00 AM until 4:00. If you come into the office Monday, you will have to stay here in City Hall and vote your absentee ballot. A few things about the ballot. For this election, we have where you have a closed primary. That means that once you vote your ballot on the front side, remember to turn it over, flip it over. There's more to be voted on the, on the opposite side. But whatever party you vote in on the front side, remember to vote on the same party on the back when you flip it over. If you make a mistake, bring your ballot in. I'll be more than happy to give you a new ballot. You can erase. You can't use whiteout. I've seen ballots with highlighter on it and everything, and that won't work. But I'll be more than happy to issue you a, another ballot. Um, if you vote the front part of your ballot and flip it over and vote in a different party, it will make your partisan section of your ballot null and void. And the only part, part of your ballot that will count will be the nonpartisan section. So I'd like for everyone to take your time, pay attention, use either a black ink pen or a blue ink pen when voting your ballot. And if you have any other questions, oh, my other concern is the mail. We've had, the mail has really been delayed and it's concerning me because I have not received a lot of the ballots back. I don't know, people may be holding on to them and you can do that, but I would prefer for you to bring them in. If you, once you're done with your ballot, you can drop it off. If it's during business hours, here, we have a drop box here at the office. If it's after business hours, we have a drop box in the parking lot that's near the police cars. You can drop your ballot off there. You can drop your water bills off in there. You can drop your taxes off in there as well. But I would prefer for you to personally bring your ballot, return your ballot to the office. You don't have to come in if you have concerns about the current situation of the coronavirus. I understand that. That's why we have that drop box in the parking lot of City Hall and you can drop your ballot off then. If you have any concerns or questions and have requested a ballot and you've not received it yet, come by and I can spoil your first ballot and reissue you another ballot. Be sure you bring in your picture ID. Also, if you go into the polls and vote, you're gonna need to show your picture ID. If you happen to forget it, we have an affidavit that's on the reverse side of your application to vote. You can complete that as well. But if you come into the clerk's office, we now have same-day voter registration. You come in and you vote here in the clerk's office, I am going to need to see something that proves that you're a resident of Lether Village. It could be your ID, your school ID, your Michigan's ID, your driver's license, your passport, things of that nature. So mail, mail that you have from, um, banking institutions, things of that nature will work as well. But I need to see something if you're going to register to vote between now and Election Day. So I just want to reiterate those points. And if you ever have any questions, just feel free to give me a call or stop into the office and I'll be more than happy to assist you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Um, one thing that I will say is that I've noticed that the, um, Lether Village Post Office has been closed. I don't know if anyone else has noticed that.
I saw that.
Yeah, so, um, this last couple of days going in there, um, some, it's hit or miss. You don't know what the hours are. Um, I did speak to someone about what was going on and, you know, it keeps going back to saying that there, there's a shortage, um, of workers. Some, I guess due to mostly, uh, COVID. Um, and from the things that I've been reading is that they're not getting overtime also. And I know that is their job to, you know, to do things, but you know, I, I'm not sure if you're already working 12 hours, are you gonna work some more time for free, I guess? But, um, one thing I did do is I did reach out to Gary Peters, Senator Gary Peters about it because, uh, I figure we're a small, uh, community and I've been reading all of that on, um, Facebook. And I thought I was getting my mail until I realized I was only getting bulk mail and I don't have any mail that's addressed directly to the household. That, you know, you know what I mean? And so, um, that is very concerning and I agree with you, um, about, I'm very concerned about, um, Election Day because I, um, have heard from numerous clerks that they're, they've sent out X amount of absentees and they've only received a certain amount back and that just, it doesn't.
Yes, it's not.
So, just let you know, I did look into it. I am waiting to hear some response. I'm not, I don't think the response is gonna be like, we're gonna open them back up tomorrow. So just know that it's on the radar that we're having some issues, um, between Southland and Lether Fossels, so.
Yep.
Yeah, it's throughout the county, cause I've been speaking with other clerks and they have been having the same problem. It's throughout the county and it's just a horrible time for that to happen, I know.
Do you have, and I'm sorry, do you have enough poll workers? Are we good with poll workers?
We are good. Yes, yes. I had a meeting with them last Saturday. Yes.
Good, I'm glad.
Thank you for asking, but I'm always looking for more, cause November is gonna be a large, huge election. You know, if anybody, please send them my way.
Well, thank you, ma'am. I appreciate that. Um, I think there is nothing else under Mayor and Council comments, if I'm not mistaken.
Election Commission.
No, that was from before. Yeah, we did that already. We, that was from before.
Perfect.
It'll be coming up for the next, for November, couple of months.
Alrighty then. So, um, I think that we're all in one accord. This has been enlightening as ever and as usual. Um, and, uh, I would take a motion to adjourn unless you all want to just stay here.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I think Bruce did too, but he mouthed it, so, um.
He's on mute.
Oh, he is on mute.
You're on mute, Bruce.
Like I'm trying to figure out how to sign.
I would say Ian's voice is just more penetrating.
Well, we are. You all have a good evening. Thank you for your service.
All right, take care.
Good night, everybody.
Good night. Thanks, Joe.